Alrighty, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and with equal justice as well. We're having a board meeting on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It is not open. We need to adopt a budget.
Those amounts are the same as the public hearing.
The public hearing.
Yeah, you agree to that. You'll have to sign it in a few ordinance.
Make a motion to accept the budget.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
This was ordinance two twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash two. All right. Do I need to write that down on there?
I got it printed on top.
We'll close that part of the meeting. Continue on. And corrections or changes to minutes?
I didn't see any. Make a motion to accept.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have minutes from the special meeting?
Yes, up there.
Here's minutes from the special meeting on October fourth at six o'clock. On the public hearing on the budget.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from the special meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mike?
Yes.
What do you got? You got anything for the board?
No, I talked to you a week ago, or maybe it was two weeks ago, about the ditch down there that runs along the field. And Piscine Street that runs through the sand pile from the new tile you guys put in a year ago that runs through my yard. About getting it dug out a little bit so water flows from the east to the west to the sand pile. My son's gonna build a pole barn out there and I need to put a driveway in. The ditch so he can get in. And I kinda want that dug out. So we didn't have to, whenever the budget became available, I didn't have to take his driveway out to re-dig it or dig it so where it all flowed at one time properly. And I talked to you and then the next day or so John come down and I talked to him and explained everything. And he could see where it was high end spots and it just needs to be taken down so all the water from the east end will flow to the west. And I understand budgets because we had budget problems when we done that tile. And I was just trying to get ahead of the game with you.
Alright.
And I didn't know, since it's late in the year and then the budget problems, I didn't know how we could work something out to get cleaned out.
Well, it won't be this year.
Slow. No, I'm not saying December or twenty-nine December. But, you know, I didn't know. Is there a chance I can pay for it and then you guys reimburse me?
No, we won't do that.
Won't do that? Well, then I'll just hang out and wait until you guys get the money back. But, I was just asking, trying to get it in the minutes and figure it out so where we could do something and put a drive in. I mean, you'll spend a thousand dollars on tile and stuff in the ditch for the driveway and all gravel.
Well, once you get that done, then we can see what we need to dig.
So then you're telling me I put a thousand dollars worth of tile and gravel in and then you're gonna dig it out?
No.
To dig the ditch out if I don't have it deep enough to make the water flow from the east to the west?
We will look at trying to make it flow through that tile. You shouldn't say it.
If it's, if it's too shallow on the east end and I put the tile in the west end and you guys dig it out and it comes to my tile and it's six inches shorter than my tile, then I gotta take my ditch and my tile out of my driveway. So you dig it out and put the tile down there six inches so water will flow through it. Otherwise, it's gonna hold six inches of water on the east end.
But from what I see, Mike, without digging the whole ditch out, we're not gonna know where it needs to be.
Exactly.
And we're not gonna do that this year. Maybe we'll get money for it next year.
That's what, that's what I, that's what I said. I'm trying to get ahead of the game. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the problem is, we don't have any money now to do it.
No, I understand that.
But we're proposing it for next year, you know, when we have the money, if we have the money, so on and so forth. So what you're doing now, I mean, it's, you know, we're a year away from doing any more than what you've got now. And, I mean, there's, you know, there's no way to know exactly where that tile needs to be to be in the bottom of the ditch that, you know.
No, exactly, hundred percent without.
We don't know where it's gonna be.
Without starting on the east end, going clear down there partially to where the sand pile's at. No, you don't know. I don't know. Not unless you lay a laser on it. No.
Yeah.
And I understand that wholeheartedly. I just wanted to talk to all of yous and get it so where, if possible, with the budget next year, then it could possibly be done.
It could possibly be done next year, but right now, we don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so no promises, no, you know, nothing, but it could possibly get done next year.
That's fine.
Yeah, so.
I just wanna talk to you.
I feel for what you're saying. I understand what you mean, but, you know, I'd go out there, you wanna put a sixteen or eighteen inch tile in now, I would guess. You know, drop it down two or three inches below what's there now and dig out away from it. That'll give them room to, you know, dig to the bottom of that next year.
Okay. I just wanted to know, I didn't know if there was any possibility of being reimbursed if I had Daylon do it. If you guys, you know, that don't work now. Why would that not work?
Because we're not hiring Daylon to do that. You're hiring Daylon to do that. If you hired Daylon to do that, then it's gonna be your cost.
Okay, okay. I didn't understand, you know. A lot of times, things get reimbursed for things like that when money's not available upfront. I just didn't know.
No, we ain't, we won't do that. If we hire Daylon to do a job, then we pay Daylon.
Okay, no problem. That's all I've got. I appreciate your time. As long as it's in the minutes, I'll tickle to death.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Now, do you have anything for the board? Jordan, have you heard of the White Collage project? Jordan?
Hi there. I also have a sign sheet, Drive meets one from you guys as well. This is for your school building. I have six copies of the memory and understanding for you guys to look over. This is for us to assist with the light application process with the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, just to get the application ready for you guys. Sorry, I was wanting to work it in. The application process, basically what we'll do is get all of the documentation ready for you guys to submit an application. They have not released the two thousand twenty-six calendar of events for the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, but if it goes to what two thousand twenty-five was, it'll probably, probably be the third week of March when the applications will be due. So it's best for us to start now getting that application ready. So what we need from you guys is documentation of things like, why is it a health and safety concern in the community? Why that school building needs to be taken down? Anytime the maintenance man has boarded it up, anytime it's been vandalized, those types of things. Susan has stated that you guys have, it's been abated for asbestos already and we'll need that documentation and an estimate of what it might cost to take it down as a whole, so we'll know what to ask the Office of Community and Rural Affairs for. There's a ten percent match for the grant, so whatever that total cost is, you guys will be responsible for ten, ten percent of that match. The Office of Community and Rural Affairs will give you up to five hundred thousand dollars. So your match will be at most fifty-five thousand dollars.
I have one question I've forgotten about that.
Yeah.
You said we start with the application and everything, but you don't write the grant.
We will write the grant.
You will write the grant.
Yes, that is, that's part of the application process is writing the grant.
I thought you said you didn't and I was like, who's gonna do that?
Nope, that's all us. Yep, that's all us.
That was my big question.
Yep.
And I'm still trying to get in contact with that company. I called the school corporation today.
Perfect.
Everybody's out full break and everything and, because I spoke with Tom Reeder. He told me it was a company in Cloverdale that, that did that. And I tried to reach, there's two companies and I tried to contact them, but I couldn't get through the phone. I even called the, I'm trying to the Chamber of Commerce to see if they could help me with that. And so I called the school corporation and spoke with her and she said that she would try to reach out to somebody, but if not, it might be Monday when they all come back, that they can look up what company that was that went there and ended up. Because if not, then we're gonna have to get a company in there to test.
Yep.
If I can't get that documentation saying that it's been moved, then I have to get a company in there to test it.
Yep, because if you don't get the abatement done and then we already asked the Office of Community and Rural Affairs for, let's say, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then we come back and you have a company, say, go to demolish the building and it's a seven hundred thousand dollar project, you guys are responsible for that remaining gap of the money.
So I'm trying to find that out. And then when I, when I get that, then I'll try to get paperwork and get a copy of, personally, all of that.
So we need to make a decision on hiring Thrive?
Yes.
To do all this work?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we hire Thrive to get all the paperwork ready so we can apply for this grant and tear down the school. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And?
Do we have five thousand to pay that?
Yes. And is it, is it five or six?
It's five.
Okay.
Do we need to sign this?
Yeah, we'll sign it.
And Sebastian will send you a signed copy back in our senior, sign it up for you.
Can you?
I don't have a signature.
No, it's just your signature.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay.
That's just your guys' copy to review.
Can you make a motion to require people to pay it? I mean, I guess I would.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and pay Thrive. Although they're paid in full.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, then we'll send you an invoice.
Okay. Are you, you need to start?
I can, I can go. Whatever you need. You have questions?
Um.
It's like your side, her side of the sheet.
Do you want me to mail that or do you want me?
Either way, we'll send you an invoice when, we won't bill you until the application is submitted. So you got, you have time unless you wanna pay ahead of time.
Okay, okay.
Well, it's already been approved there, so.
Yeah, so that's fine.
I'll just move it.
Yep, that's fine. And we'll mark it down. It's paid.
Will that five thousand come out of that ten percent?
No, that's separate for administration.
That's separate, because that's it. Okay. Okay, that works.
When do you think we will need to have bids? After. We would normally submit bids once we get the funding, but I don't know how much the funding will be.
We should know, you mean to actually do the demolition?
Yes.
We should probably have an idea of who you would like to do before we apply. But the bids to actually have it done should probably be done about the time we apply.
And when will you apply?
March, the third week of March.
It's quite a bit difficult getting anybody to even talk to us about it.
Well, we did have somebody, Jared from S and G Excavator. And they gave us a quote of a hundred and twenty-three.
Okay.
Thousand eight hundred. And if they take all the cement out, I don't know how much we're supposed to do.
Okay.
But that's leaving the pad. And then it states here that it'd be another eighteen thousand if they take the pad out.
Okay.
Eighteen seventy.
What the Office of Community and Rural Affairs will ask you to do is leave it as a green space for the next three to five years is what it states in your agreement with them.
So we would have to take that out.
Most likely, yes, they'll ask you to do that. If for the next, what they state, three to five years, unless you go after another grant to build like a community building or something in that space, you're required to leave it as a green space for those, what they state, three to five years, unless you do.
So we'd have to pay that eighteen seventy. So it'd be a hundred and forty.
What, what did you say, what did you say, what?
Hundred and forty.
But that's without winding up all the asbestos too.
Yes, we do need to make sure. We need that note.
Get out so I know what I'm paying for that.
Yes.
For this.
To remove the asbestos. We do need a note stating that the asbestos has already been removed from that building, just so you're not liable for, for that.
So as I was saying before I get interrupted, we've been having a little problem getting bids, period. How many are required to have?
You're not required to have any bids at all. You're allowed to use whoever you would like to use for your demolition.
Okay.
Yep, it's up to your discretion.
Okay.
Okay, I'll work on trying to get that asbestos. I don't know about that.
Now, if they can't get the asbestos, like from the company, can they get something from the school corporation since it was their building? And that they did have the asbestos removed?
Yes, if the school corporation knows that they had it removed.
Okay, so in case you can't get over that company, it's from the school board.
Yeah, that's, I'm seeing if they have any people working on it.
Well, if they, they can give a statement that we can say before they turn it over to the town, like if the asbestos was removed before they're occupied. You can't make over that company, the way you're saying.
They move from them?
Yeah, you need documentation stating that it was removed.
Okay.
And they, it needs to come from whoever they had certified saying that they had it removed, the company that they used.
So I would need the statement from the company they used or from the school corporation?
It has to come from the company that did the, you know.
Company, okay.
Sharon, are you sure we do not need bids?
I will double check on that, but the last one that we had used just one company. I think maybe because they didn't have any other options, but I'll double check on that because if you guys are having trouble getting those bids, but I'll double check on that. Since you guys aren't having the issue of having those, that you just have the one bid, I'll double check on that, though.
Alright, sounds good. Well, you know, Susan, get anything from them and then, like I told Mike, that we can read statements on, on billing any issues that we've had with that.
Okay.
Told you about that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Any other questions I can answer for you guys?
No, mine was just making sure he was gonna write the.
Yeah, perfect. Yep. I will double check on that, how many bids you need, and I will email you tomorrow. Clarify.
It's not a question of how many bids we need, it's a question of do we need to advertise for bids.
Actually advertise for the bids, yes. Yep, I will double check on that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Of course, that's.
Alright, then we will go over the minutes real quick. Steve Brock, did we ever get anything back from Steve Brock?
I haven't heard anything from him, so.
I emailed him on October seventh and asked him if we were good, if he had everything that he needed. And then it took him a little while, can't remember the date. This week, because I was here late one evening and he said that he had that.
I think he said August the seventh.
Yeah, he said, um, thank you, and then he would get on it the next morning and try to have something to do by the end of the week, and that was last week. So, but he's, but he's getting everything together, I suppose. He said something about one, he does, he asked how an ordinance fit the paper. I don't know if the other towns did that or not, that that's what he's only got to put in the ordinance, um, in the paper notifying residents of the water.
Yeah, I'll take care of that once we get his materials.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I didn't know who was gonna.
Okay, asphalt, the roads haven't been repaired. Nayland got his ditches done.
Is that all he's doing with that?
Right now.
Well, Heather and her husband are concerned about the ditch at their house. They're saying that the water has to raise up so many inches before it gets into the pipe to go. And noting that the water's going to wash out the ground and on the pipe underneath it. They called me, questioned me about that and asked if he was done and I said, yeah. And her husband said that, um, that the ditch is, I think he said six inches below that pipe and the water's gonna have to get up to get through the pipe. So I don't know, can you check that out?
Alright, I'll check it. I'm sure you can come back and fix it if something goes wrong. Have you heard anything back from Cloverly?
No, I never asked them to respond. I would hope that they've made some repairs. Have they done anything yet?
I don't know. Have you seen changes other than that hatch there? But that's what we did, you know, that's what the other areas did. Actually, about half the city crap on the west, that's what we had a little bit of rain for itself up there. Well, they're not doing nothing, so.
Yeah, I agree. It hasn't changed at all since we started with all this.
So I don't know if we need to have a meeting with them or.
I think if you, one of you want to go and talk to them and see what they're going to do, that's a good thing.
Okay. I'll try to get down there and talk to the board the next quarter.
We should, the shelter is available on twenty first of July.
What is it?
Painting the shelter twenty first.
Okay, are they gonna paint the handicap ramp too?
This one here? I don't know.
Well, they are, we probably need to get extra paint.
We got twenty first.
We've got them until two o'clock, so I have a little. Trash can lids, did we get our lids in?
They were ordered and I'm not receiving yet.
Okay.
The doors and boards in are outside.
Are they outside?
He's sitting around there by the door.
Okay, so we need to get installed. Okay. You got your vehicle back?
Yes, temporarily. There's still some parts that are, hadn't come in yet. And so I'm just waiting on them to call when it's over. I'm waiting on those. It's functional. So it's functional for the most part.
Okay, did they get the the O B A funds? Did you get that took care of?
Um, she has not got back with me. I need to check her again. I've been doing some things and kinda forgot about that. But I need to check her again or not.
Okay, we got ornaments here with the playground. Eric sent us two ornaments, different ornaments. I ain't got them on my phone.
Was that there?
No.
I don't know what you want.
That's alright. I think we will go with, we're gonna need a ordinance, so. I think the towns agreed to go with what Knoxville's got or Harmony, but.
I don't, John mentioned that he wanted no, no dogs in the park.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's alright. I'll go along with that.
That's what Harmony has, no dogs allowed in the park.
No, actually, they don't.
That's what they did around the park, around the, the trail.
Oh, the trail?
Susan's getting the ornaments.
We decided we was gonna have it on the leash, because they had, had put something, you know, about cleaning up after the dog. I don't know.
Well, the thing is, they're letting them dogs, you know, clean up after. Do it around the playground equipment. And then the kids get out of their plane and then they got dog poop all over them.
While she's checking that out, I had called Susan last week, it was on Wednesday, to help me. Somebody dumped seven puppies in the park at their showhouse. So I'm working on that. So, I'm working on that, um. He made something, did take the puppies, that was my help in that aspect of it. Um, today, I talked to the owner of the puppies, what, you know, who took them, what they did, so, talked to the prosecutor's office, working on that case right now, but, um, the lady that dumped, that is accused of dumping in the park, lives over on Place Street now with her dad, after she dumped out of jail, she was in jail for a felony charge of illegal, uh, child, uh, child endangerment. For her, so this week, this week, I don't know how far it's gonna go with prosecutor's office, uh, so we're still working on that case.
There's the ones on separate, I have one print on both pages, so it's got one on one side and one on the other. But then the, the separate ones, these guys.
So what do you think, John?
Well, if we let dogs in the park, then, I mean, how are we gonna patrol that? Did they pick it up? Did they not pick it up?
Wouldn't be easier for you, Mike?
You know, to eliminate the, the potential issues, not allowing any dogs in the park, just as same as Harmony, because everyone says their dog is friendly, yeah, I, I get that, but the number of dogs, you know, the years that I've been around, oh, the dog won't bite, well, you have to get more times from dogs that won't bite, bite from, watch out for that dog, get bites. Um, but as a, as a, you know, where does the town, and I would ask to refer to Eric, uh, where's the liability? If you allow dogs in there, then the dog does do something or gets loose, I mean, obviously it's the owner's responsibility, but if you allow dogs or if there's no dogs allowed in the park, so. I mean, as far as being a monitor, it's easier to say no dogs. If somebody has a dog and the dog can't, he's not, that's supposed to have a dog in here, it's a safety issue, alright?
That's why I brought it up, that was my thought. To his point, you know? Who, who is responsible? And if we say no dogs and something happened, we have, I believe it's true, we would have no liability on us because they were breaking the law with their dog in the park.
And that's the thing, anybody can sue for anything that, that we're, but it, it helps us a little bit better when I, you know, have a rule that allow it, that's your life.
Okay, so you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to no dogs in the park.
One second.
We need to suspend the rules and approve this on first reading, first thing, so.
Okay, we need to, uh, suspend the rules and approve this on first reading on ordinance number three dash twenty twenty five. All in favor of, uh, ordinance number three dash twenty twenty five?
Aye.
I agree.
Did we get a motion to suspend the rules?
Yeah, I did that.
Okay.
Before.
Sign that one please, if.
The who, who seconded that?
Larry seconded it. And this is the, uh, what I guess we have to do that, I guess we're signing this.
So you made a motion to suspend the rules on the, approve on the first.
Abandon the first reading.
And then, do you have to?
Get a motion to approve.
How many copies do you need?
She needs one, I need one, but.
I can, with that one to get signed. Maybe we could.
Just make me buy one.
No dogs allowed. She's done? No, she's, he needs one, she needs one. But that one's got something on the back of it, so I don't know if she needs one without, if they don't sign it. It's just, this is the ordinance, this one, this is the ordinance, that. You got your copies, did?
Yeah.
Okay, then.
That's my next issue.
You can give me that back. Alright. Uh, Louise has been capped down there by Crawford Street, so that's done. Did you send all the information, Eric, on properties in town that needs attention?
Yeah, he's got the most current, I said, I talked to Susan the other day, and in a few minutes, since I talked to Susan, a few of them have already got caught up on their, that one.
Alright. I think that's everything. Mike, do you have anything for the town?
Uh, briefly talking about the puppy case that Susan had to come out and help catch over the Scholder house, working on that. Uh, obviously we've got the car back temporarily. There's one issue with the car, the, the in-car camera system is over ten years old and outdated and, um, had an incident last week thinking the camera was gonna work, it didn't work, and it's used it, um, on traffic, so we're, camera's gonna come out and, uh, and, uh, take a lady with mental issues to the hospital. Um, I let Susan know about that case. Just in case something come out of it as far as working with Scott, uh, the way she was finding.
Is that the one with the medicine?
Was it taken her medicine? Yeah, and she's still currently in the hospital, um, the last I heard from her brother. So, once the car is complete, um, gonna look at possibly what the cost is to upgrade that camera, so it is working properly.
I'll get some quotes and.
Yeah, um. Other than that, the trick or treat hours, I know coming up, you guys gotta set hours for what days? Uh, trick or treat, actually, oh, you know, thirty, thirty first, that's what you've done in short run of the past. I know the town, the town is still doing their main street thing, highway forty Brazil was for all the businesses. Because last year we had a, you know, there was a low number of kids in town, uh, you know. Nowadays, most parents are taking it to areas that they know and likes, unless it's just somebody, you know, a family member. I don't think we're having this amount of kids that we did in the past, going from house to house. Um, which, you know, which, whether you set the hours or the days, I think I'll definitely be here, uh, to watch. The community corrections is coming from this Saturday from eight to two to paint, so we, you know. But we have, whatever we have in that time period to get done, we can get done. So. Then with the new ordinance, I mean, the sign up.
Yeah, part of what, we'll have to get that made, yeah, so people know, I mean, I know it's gonna be advertised session, so this will be in effect in about two weeks after.
It needs to be published once a week for two weeks.
Two weeks, yes. So I guess, so sometimes we get the sign up in two, just so people know.
And what does that sign need to have? Does it need to have by ordinance, no dogs allowed in the park, or?
By ordinance, yeah, you just like, basically the dogs allowed in the park by, have ordinance and then the ordinance number. Because that ordinance number is probably correct, that, you know, the national copy of, of it to read, you know, but it's kind of, so.
Well, that's what I meant, I didn't know, like, by ordinance, whatever, no definitely, that was allowed in the park.
Yeah.
Ordinance twenty twenty five three, you did it with that.
Right.
So Halloween's on Thursday, ready?
Well, this, Thursday, Friday from six to nine, is that what we're doing?
Two nights or just one?
Let's do thirty first, six to nine.
Fuck, if we're just going to the trunk or trees, we just didn't have the trick or treaters last year.
Just Friday?
Just Friday, six to nine.
Six to nine, one day, so. Yeah. So it'll be thirty first, six to nine.
Look, paper note, did they publish that for the towns?
Anything for the board?
Um, yes, I do. So I gave you guys, um, papers to proofread for me a little while ago. So do you remember that lead copper report inventory paper that we were supposed to have turned in? We were working with Alliance on that. So I sent out letters to all the water people and asked them if they could tell us what their pipes were from the meter to the house. Well, we have five hundred water customers, okay? I got not even two hundred of those back. I asked everybody, when does my report have to be turned in? And who do I turn it in to? Could not get an answer from anybody. Nobody could give me a deadline when it was supposed to be turned in, or who I had to turn it in to. Anyways, long story short, it didn't get turned in on time, because nobody would tell me. It finally got turned in to Scott Aaron with Alliance in April, but it was supposed to be turned in October sixteenth of twenty twenty four. So we failed to turn it in on time. But then to make the story even a little bit longer, Scott Aaron failed to turn it in to the Environmental Protection Agency, where it was supposed to be turned in to. So, we got deemed for not turning it in at all. I did my part, turned it in to Scott, but he didn't turn it in to where it needed to be turned in to. So I, we did get ahold of this Kevin Hogan guy. And I called Alliance and I, I was really uptight with him. And I told him, look, I turned it in to you guys, you were supposed to handle it. Anyway, it got turned in that day. Um, so then Kevin Hogan called me and said, okay, so we'll take the penalty of tier one and tier two off of, uh, off of the table, and you guys don't have to correct those actions, because we received a report. So we only have to do a tier three correction. Which, the letter that I handed to you, okay, so I have that letter. We can do it a couple different ways. We can make copies of those, send them out to each customer. Or we can make copies of them, put them in Knight'sville Post Office, Harmony Post Office, and take a picture of it and post it on our Facebook page. And then I have to fill out this, and then I have to send it into Kevin Hogan by the thirty first of this month. So what do you guys think is best? Make copies of all of those to all five hundred customers, send them out? Or just post them in the post offices, post it on the Facebook page, and be done with it?
I haven't said this, but are we, is the customer supposed to send something back to you?
No.
I just put it in the post office.
We just have to notify people that we got a tier three for not turning it in on time.
Alright, post it in the post office and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just to notify the public that we got a mark against us for not turning it in on time.
Well, we might have to see if, um, Barrett can go around and check these meters.
Eventually, we will have to hire him, because we don't have him finished. Eventually, we'll have to either send out more letters to every single customer, have them fill them out. If they don't fill them out, then we will have to hire a company to go around and check each one, everybody's meters to see.
That's what Brazil did, they had Barrett go around checking them all because people wouldn't get back with them.
Right, and we have, if we find any lead, we have up to three years to correct that. No, we have up to three years to get everybody's meters checked, and then up to ten years to change out every lead pipe that there is.
On which side of the meter?
From the ha, from the meter to the house.
But you're saying if we, if something is found from the meter to the house.
It's on them, but they can hire us to do it, and we can do it, but they will have to pay us to do it.
I'm with that, yeah, I understand.
But we still have to hire somebody, because we're not getting the response back from the customers on what kind of piping they have. So we have to have those reports and that inventory in from every customer. And because we're not getting those in from them, we're gonna have to hire somebody to go around to every meter and find out what it is.
So we have to know what kind of plumbing is on both sides.
On both sides, huh?
We're not responsible to them to replace it.
Right.
But we have to know what it is.
Right. Correct. Other than that, that's all I have.
Alright. Eric, do you have anything for the board?
No.
Uh, John?
Do we have anything that's gonna go on with where the, uh, the column is sitting?
We're working on that right now. We got, we called up, uh, Center Point Energy, because they're the one that created this problem. Cause they took all the rip rack that was laid there when they did the ditch.
Yeah.
They moved all that rip rack, and now it's fortunately.
And the reason I bring it up is, I don't even know why, but Sunday, I was coming by there and I just pulled in to look at it again, and it looks to me like it's getting worse. It seems to be a little further back than it was.
Well, we're trying to see what Center Point's gonna do, if they don't do nothing, we're gonna have to official ourselves.
I see.
But since they created the problem, they should be, be responsible for it.
I a hundred percent agree with that.
We might, since they won't get back with her, we might have to get Eric involved and send him a letter.
So with that, um, I have picked up phone up and put up there numerous times, it is getting worse. Dark pavement is caving in more. Um, I called them again today, and I questioned why no one has got back with me on that. Um, he said that he looked and he said that I did submit something on October first, and that he is going to, um, do whatever he needed to do to notify someone that I have not been contacted yet. And it's been, probably, you know, it's been two weeks, but they need to get somebody out here. So look at that, and I'm telling you, I just need someone to come out here and check the area where all the, you know, the rip rack got moved, and it's washing out from where you need to cut the road. Um, I also, um, got ahold of my son Zach and asked him, do you know, I'm waiting on them, but I don't know how long we can wait. Um, but do you know any companies that would pour concrete like in the basement there, you know? Cause there's that black plastic pipe down the bottom, and it's just, it's washing out, and it's a rubbing that. And, um, he said something about, um, Bryce Shop. And, um, he said something about, um, Bryce Shopmeyer, Shopmeyer? That he does work like that, and that he knew a couple more that he would try to reach out to, I said, I just need somebody to come up. I just need somebody out there looking at that, to see what we need to do, and I'm waiting on Center Point Energy to back with me on that. I'm trying, but, I mean, I don't know what to do.
Right, but if it continues, we might have to call Eric to have him send a letter to Center Point.
Talked to Justin Mulkey down at the highway department, and he said to get ahold of Brad Barrett, since Brad Barrett works for Knoxville Water anyway, to get ahold of Brad Barrett, and see if he could, see if he could do something like that. So Justin, that I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, he does need concrete work. Brad don't normally do concrete work, so.
So that's why I reached out to Zach and asked him if he knew anybody that could do that, and also told them again today, and told them, I need somebody out there looking at that, it's getting worse, the road's falling in.
Anything else, John?
No, no for me.
Uh, Larry, do you have anything? Uh, I have nothing at the moment. We'll get some out down here and get that, but, uh, that, move to the board.
Okay, okay.
Uh. Susan, you got anything?
Um, I have a request today from Community Shelter for a donation. How do I?
It's a weird thing, but I would, you know, I don't think what last year they asked for a good dollar.
I think, I think guys, we donate two hundred, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we got all the right.
I make a motion, we send them two hundred bucks.
One second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here you go. And there's your. What else you got for us, Susan?
Um, my printer. My printer's doing fun business.
It's like you need to make.
When I, I tried it. Actually, I cleaned it last, I, yeah, um, when I copy it from the actual computer screen, it's coming out fine, but when I copy, I'm getting this. So I reached out to, um, the Brothers, uh, I'm using the Brothers' computer, or printer that we have, and, um, the one that we have is discontinued, and, uh.
Wonder why.
He said that it's eleven hundred dollars for a new one, but this one have like four trays, and I'm like, I don't need four trays, I, I really don't. So then he emailed me back and told me the issue I was having, that my first print of the day jams. Can I take that out, and it'll print all day long just fine, but now I'm getting that space, so I don't know, and I, I don't, I don't want to jump out a twelve hundred dollar printer, um, we have the Lenovo computers now, so I don't know if there's a printer that would match the computer, but there's free warranty with that one too. And it comes with, what, your ink cartridge?
Well, we gotta have a printer, so, uh, just see what you can get, maybe something a little less expensive, you know?
I know. I've seen some for six hundred, I just wanna make sure it has a C N F printer that's, that I need all for them, but I really want some twelve hundred dollar printer.
Might, might have to get ahold of Staples and see what they got. Most printers are compatible with different computers.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, I'm, I still with them, I'm not gonna.
Alright.
Cause I looked at some of the Lenovo.
You guys wanna make a motion, so when you find something?
They'll make a motion, you get a printer, I'm that.
Okay.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have all the last requests on that, too.
Alright, that's all we got. We will, our next town board, uh, town council meeting will be held November eleventh, second Tuesday of the month, at six P M. And we'll call this meeting to adjourn. Thank you.